We'll call the council work session for July the 26th to order at 6:01 PM. I ask the city clerk to call the robe, please.
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo. Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Renninger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
We have a quorum. This is a work session, not a public hearing, not an official meeting. There'll be no votes or decisions made. We're just meeting as a council and mayor to discuss issues for the city and try to come to some consensus and direction to go, to help move the city forward. At this time, I'd like for the mayor to give us a report. We have recently lost our IT director and as such, certain security measures must be put in place and I'd like for the mayor to share what he's had done.
Okay, yes, sir. We have taken some precautions there with our IT department. We've done a complete backup of the system. We've changed some security codes. We've, also though, my recommendation for further analysis is that I feel like this should go to our finance committee and then that way we can have a analysis done of our complete IT department to find out exactly what equipment we have, what equipment we need, what our deficiencies are and be able to move forward in a proper manner. But at this point in time, that's pretty much all that I can really tell you.
Any questions for the mayor?
Short-term, long-term solution? Are you thinking hiring somebody thinking, I mean, it's no big secret that I'm a big proponent of subbing this out and shutting the department down and just going straight to a subcontractor. What's your thoughts on that?
On privatizing?
Or just what's your short-term plan on fixing, having somebody to, if a computer crashes, what are we gonna do?
Well, right now, we are already doing some IT businesses with BWS, local company here, but I've already been contacted by a couple of other companies who are interested in, in doing business with the city of Prattville, some individuals also. But anyway, short-term, you know, I'm not afraid to say that I'm not a IT expert, so there's so much that I do not know about IT that I'm, I had to take an advice from a lot of people on this. But, short-term, I really feel like that we're, we're, we need to have our system looked at, we need to have a, a plan put together so that way we know exactly what our deficiencies are and where we can cover all of our bases on it and do it the, the most efficient way for the city. Temporarily, some little in-house stuff is that we're trying to educate our different city employees on pretty much little do's and don'ts with, with computers. That way it can help keep out different viruses and so forth, that general housekeeping, stuff like that for computers. But right now, once we, I think we need to bring some information to the finance department and let us, let them decide exactly what route we need to go in as far as security.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a quick pitch to two of the men that are on the finance committee. My theory behind privatizing, as you well know, I own a carpet store. We work people on the clock, we work people on subs. The whole idea in business is make as much money as possible on the men and women that you work. So, my towel setters, wood setters are all on the clock because I can make more money on them. Carpet guys, they're on subs because they can't make as much money if they're on the clock. The same theory is in the city or any business. You look at how you can make the most money off the people you have. In the IT department, we had a man that worked for us that was working two other jobs at the same time because he didn't have enough to do to keep him busy for 40 hours a week. Why in the world are we gonna pay the salary, the insurance, city vehicle, city gas, city insurance, and an office when you don't have 40 hours worth of work to do every week? It's a very simple solution, sub it out. So that's gonna be my pitch to you guys, okay?
Well, the people that I have talked with say that the position that City of Prattville is in is we're sort of on the breaking point of that we're really too big in one area, but then also too small in another area for it to be completely defined, is whether we need to keep it all in-house or if we need to try to sub some of it out. But it's, and there again, also, it all depends on how much, how quick of a response time that we want. There again, I'm not the expert in that area, that's where I really feel like that I need somebody with professional guidance on, in this area. If you need to know something about a car, let me know, but when it comes to IT, computers and stuff, I'm a little bit challenged there.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Miller?
I was just about to raise my hand before Councilman Bowles spoke to really encourage you to look at all the options. We're at a nice window of opportunity in order to look at whether or not we want to continue to have that as a entity that's within the city operations or to contract it out. So I would really encourage you to look at all the options and what best suits our needs, obviously with the financial aspect of it being a key consideration in those deliberations. I just wanted, I guess now I will second what Councilman Bowles has said in terms of looking at those options.
Okay, thank you. Which, there again, this IT department, it just so happens, I guess, since I've become mayor, one area that I did bring out of IT department was the web, webmaster, or that got brought up underneath the executive department. But I, my understanding is that years ago, the Spillman program was actually up underneath the police department and now it got moved up underneath IT. So it might be that we have to look at, look at it as if it's two separate components in there. The Spillman program over here and then our true computerized network over on this other side. But it's a little bit the, the quick learning process that I've had to go through over the last week or so, it's very interesting on the capabilities for protection and also, I guess, attack also. So it is something that I believe that we need to move forward on just as quick as possible.
Anything, Councilman Striplin? Okay. We're gonna move on to the next item, E-911 proposed contract. I had the opportunity and pleasure of having a breakfast meeting with Mr. McBraer and Mr. Magoo from the E-911 board. The mayor and I met along with Councilman Fink, who represents the council on the E-911 board. What I gleaned of, out of our meeting was there was a good deal of misunderstanding between the members of the board and others. It was exacerbated by perhaps the newspaper and some rumors going around. We were able to resolve some of our concerns among us, but this time I wanna, I'd asked Nathan, our Councilman Fink, to come before us, but he was called out of town unexpectedly for a business. I'd like for the mayor to give us a capsule on the proposed contract for E-911. Mayor?
Well, with your, if your indulgence, we actually have 911 Director Don McBraer here and, and if you would like, I think it'd probably be better to get the information direct from him if, if you so desire.
Is that okay with the council? Any objection? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and I really wasn't prepared to speak to you tonight, but I'll be glad to. One thing I'd like to get across to everyone, everyone needs to understand this, is that Ataga County and the City of Prattville has the best 911 setup, system, and quality of service in the state of Alabama is second to none. And it has been since its setup in 1986. And a lot of hard work went in to setting this thing up and a lot of hard work through the years with all the employees that have worked there and all the different board members have, have made this a premier and model system. I get calls from counties throughout the state wanting to come look at us and look at our system because of our centralized dispatch model. Give you an example, last Friday morning, I walked into the dispatch center at 7:15, a 911 call came in. A man's wife was not breathing. Call taker takes the call, dispatcher sitting beside her, dispatch station three, within eight seconds, they were toning it out. The call taker stayed on the phone, talked the man through CPR on his wife, and in less than four minutes, we had two paramedics and an engine company in the bedroom, in the house, taking over CPR. Why in the world would we want to do anything to disrupt that kind of service in, in the city and in the county? A lot of rumors going around about the city having to carry the brunt of 911 funding. Actually, the $108,150 that we had asked for as, for an allocation the last several years was for payment for services provided beyond emergency 911 care. That represents 11% of the actual revenue that I collect and it represents about 8.8% of my total budget. We are funded through E-911 service fees that we collect from the service providers for wireless and wireline services. But Alabama state code is real particular about what we can use those for. There are like four or five things that it says in the code that we can use it for. And there's also an Alabama Attorney General opinion out that states that we cannot use those funds for routine dispatching of law enforcement. So, what it takes me to dispatch fire, police, ambulance in the city of Prattville is five FTEs, five full-time employees. And it costs me just over $200,000 a year to provide that service. And that's all we're asking for. If the city of Prattville decided to take over their own dispatching, you would most likely need two police dispatchers and two fire dispatchers on at all times. That's 12 people per day, times a relief factor of 1.7 is 20 FTEs. You'd have to hire 20 people to fill 12 positions. You're looking at over $700,000 right there in just employee cost, $25,000 in holiday pay because they have to work holidays, $9,000 to $10,000 a year in overtime pay. You'd probably have to have about two bodies or two FTEs to cover all the administrative duties that go along with what we do with the central, with the routine dispatching up there. And you would need about half million dollars' worth of equipment to get started. So, we're looking at $100,000 to $200,000 allotment to 911 who's providing exceptional service right now with well-trained people and great relationships with the, with the agencies that we provide, or you're looking at going over a million dollars. It doesn't make sense either way, guys, and I plead to really think about this, to, what we do is much too important for politics to be involved in it. We have to make, we have to make the right business decision here. I beg you to do that and to think about that. Because you have a, a good system of committed people who, who work hard to do, do a good job and they're, they're passionate about what they do up there. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. McBraer? While we have, Councilman Miller?
What, on the sales tax, what, I guess, what's the total amount that is generated countywide and then how much is city versus the rest of the county that's not city?
Well, I'll tell you this, in Ataga County, we have about 18,000 households. We have 14,444 wireline services. Probably out of that 14,000, right off the top of my head, I would say probably 6,000 of that is in the county. So, you know, we'd have to sit down and do, and do the figures. But when 911 was set up, it was set up to serve Ataga County, that's the citizens of Prattville and everyone in the county.
But again, those figures, those are, those figures you can make available?
I can, I can get those figures for you, I sure can. I'll just have to crunch some numbers for you.
Okay. And just, just, and I think we all appreciate the fact that you have put together a team and have an operation that is really exemplary. So, none of this is negative in terms of reflecting on that, but I think in order to have the whole picture, that would be an important part of it, how much of the funding is actually generated from citizens in the city compared to the total.
Yeah, and like I say, I couldn't give you an exact number, but I can give you a ballpark number, just based on the number of households and landlines.
That'd be good, that'd be good. Thank you.
Questions? Councilman Bowles?
Okay, um, I understand y'all need money, just like we need money. But where I'm sitting at, we've had to raise sales tax, we've had to raise garbage rates, we've had to raise sewage rates, we've had to raise ticket rates, we've raised rates everywhere. And at this point in time, I'm not comfortable at all on raising anything in the funds of giving out to 911, to the Chamber of Commerce, Dog, to the Humane Shelter, library. There's a lot of good things out here. But I have done a little bit of research and I understand, you're saying it would be cost to the city about $700,000 if we do this on our own. But we would get funds back from the landlines and the cell phones, and we also own the Spillman system. See, most, they tried to, Clinton had up, up and paid $200,000 more. And there's another city in Birmingham that had to pay, a lot of 911s are doing this, holding the cities over the backs and to get the money. But we own, I want everybody to understand, we own the Spillman system, we don't have to buy that. We own the computer systems, we don't have to buy those. It wouldn't take a lot of money and we would probably need to put a board together to see what kind of funds we could actually make if we took it over and provided 911 just for Prattville. Because you'd also have to consider the funds to come ring in. So I would like Mary Gillespie, if you would, to put a panel together and let's look at both sides of the coin. Is it cheaper just to go ahead and pay the $118,000 and support it, or is it cheaper for the city financially to have its own 911? I'd like to, just playing devil's advocate, I would like to know both sides of that coin. So when we do make this decision, we make the right decision. So I'd ask respectfully that we put a board together and let's see what it costs for us to actually do this thing.
Any other questions? Councilman Striplin?
Thank you. I received a package of, of information from Mr. Fink, Councilman Fink, and I was asked to look at it. And I suppose your, your year runs October 1 through September 30. There was nothing in the information that, that led you to believe that. And then there was some information in here about completed by your goals and purposes quarter one and quarter two, so that's not a calendar quarter, it's the quarter that would, the way it would fall.
That's correct, physical quarter.
Okay. Who owns the current building that you all are in?
The 911 board.
Okay.
Well, the 911 district, we are a nonprofit government entity in a legal and political subdivision of the state of Alabama. We are incorporated and a corporation owns the building and the equipment.
We were also given your, your budget for 2011 that, and one of the areas and the goals and the purpose that it talked about, that you were going to develop career pathways and pay plan for each job title will result in approximately a 4% increase in salaries and wages over the fiscal year 2010, but your budget shows that there was about a 14% increase, going from 686,000 to 797,000. And, so I just wondered about the, that. And then, there are several places here in your goals, you talk about estimated cost in this example, 4,000 to be charged to training and development budget. I didn't see a training and development budget item, line item on the, the sheet that was given to us. It may be under another name, but I didn't see that.
There is a training line item on there, but there's not a separate budget for training. But I mean, I mean, there's a line item there for training.
Okay. I apologize, I missed it then. And I was not familiar with, I've, I've heard of capital improvements, but a, a capital operating fund, is that your normal operating fund? It was just a terminology I was not familiar with.
Well, it's funds that we had left over from last year that I put into a capital expense fund to replace equipment with and to buy new equipment and technology. In this business, we have about $850,000 worth of equipment that we have to plan on replacing it from time to time over a three to five-year period. And that's why we have to have those kinds of funds set aside.
I don't disagree with that, it was just the terminology I was not, not familiar with that. Thank you.
Anything else?
I would like to respond to the salaries increase. You may be looking at two different line items. The 797,000 represented all salaries and benefits. The 636,000 was just salaries and wages without benefits. I don't know what you're looking at there, but that's, that was the difference. But we did have an increase in salaries because when I got there, my first year, the focus was on making that a better place to work because your work environment depends on the output and production you get from your people, and it was not a good place to work and it is now. And those are my, those were my plans for the first year, which we accomplished.
Okay. Any other thing? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to the-
Mr. Renninger, excuse me, may I say something about that?
Oh, yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Sorry about that. Well, I do want to say that Mr. McBraer has done an excellent job up there and I've seen quite a few improvements that he's been able to make over the, pretty much the last year that he's been there. I do think that this is something that, that the city and 911, that we do need to get together and see exactly what their expectations are from the city for this upcoming year because if I'm not mistaken, I think our initial negotiating point is gonna be 215. And so anyway, we do have a lot of wiggle room in there that we've got to try to find a compromising point on and so forth. But, and I don't know if you want to put together, you know, Councilman Bowles has requested a committee of some, some sort to, to look into this. Do you want to do that through the council or you want, what's the council's pleasure from?
I'll take care of that from the chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's move on to healthcare insurance premiums. This was a subject that was brought up in our last regularly scheduled council meeting. It has been held. Mayor, did you, do you have any current information that you want to share with us on that?
We got some today. We're still crunching some of the numbers, but actually the numbers at this point in time are looking probably better than what we had initially expected. We were thinking that it might be a certain percentage of an increase and I know in one area it was, it was a flat, flat line item on it and, but we're still working on those numbers, just got them late this afternoon. So, at this point in time, it'd be a little premature to bring those, bring that information forward.
Okay. Any questions, Mayor, on that particular issue? Councilman Miller?
There's a figure of $25 a month that was recommended by the committee increase.
Yes, so that's the number I was told that, I think approximately, was it three years ago, two years ago, that the committee sent down a recommendation? No, last year, last year, I'm sorry. Last year, the Employee Insurance Committee sent down a recommendation that $20, $25 a month increase beginning January of, this next, this coming January, that the employees' portion go up $25.
Ken, that would have been in effect come in January 1 of 2012?
Yes.
It is, it's January 1 of 2012, and we have discussed a recommendation in 2012 by Senator Ray Allen, who just-
Okay, and I guess, I guess my, I guess what I'm trying to reconcile is that it was a recommendation already before us from that committee based on whatever criteria they assess and already sort of put into place based on those criteria, and yet, this report that's just come in, in terms of, I guess, the bill?
Yes, sir.
The proposal from Blue Cross is now something that potentially would be used. Now we've got new information, but I'm trying to reconcile that the $25 was already with a sound basis that served to generate that recommendation. Am I making, am I making sense trying to reconcile those, how new information, unless they've just given us a great big whopping discount or something we totally didn't expect in terms of the city's obligation?
In my opinion, I, I think that some of the information that we did get was, you know, better than what we had anticipated, but she can better answer your questions up.
Yes, we did get good information today and we'll be passing that along soon. The insurance committee met last year and after we discussed the total rates of our insurance premium as suggested by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we looked at the percentage that the employees were paying and the insurance committee agreed that we needed to get to a, we, we used the term 80/20 split was what we were trying to get to. We couldn't do that in one year. It would have been too taxing on our employees. It would have been more than they could handle in one year. So we were looking at a two to three-year plan. Year one was a flat $25 a month increase and we implemented that last year. We went ahead and discussed this coming year doing the same thing. Employees would have the option of having the health risk assessment done, which would lend to our wellness program. If you had that, you would not receive the $25 a month increase. If you chose not to participate in the wellness benefit, you would then have an increase in your healthcare premium. That was the wishes of the insurance committee from the previous year. And we were even looking at a third year with maybe smoking cessation and obesity. The state, the city of Montgomery, and the county of Montgomery have done the same type thing and with the clinic onboard, we have the facilities to offer that to our employees and it reduces claims on our Blue Cross claims because, you know, you're looking at your wellness benefit.
And it's, when you say it's modeled after the state, so there also will be that follow-through on the part of the employee if they exceeded the established criteria on the screening?
Yes, that would have to follow through.
It's not just having a screening and then don't do anything about it?
Right, it would be an annual screening and then follow-through, absolutely.
Yeah, because follow-through for a state employee is you demonstrate either self-management or you go to a YMCA program or Weight Watchers, there's a whole menu of that, so that's similar to what we've adopted.
That's very similar to what we'd be looking at.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I would like to say that as we gather, get all this information compiled together, I will be sending out emails to the, to the council and so forth on, on this.
Okay. Let's move to the next item, wastewater study. Councilman Argo was supposed to have an update for us, but if Councilman Striplin could step up to the plate and give us an overview of where we are on that right now, I'd appreciate
Thank you. There is a planned meeting tomorrow to tour the Ataga Treatment Facility. And Mr. Kaywood is going to present and discuss with us the scope of the work that he is planning. There is also, at our last meeting, the council authorized the mayor to enter into a contract with Jackson Thornton Utilities to provide information, excuse me, concerning the rate amount that we are currently charging, to do an analysis of that. The analysis report from Jackson Thornton is needed by Mr. Kaywood's firm to finalize a portion of his report. The Jackson Thornton report, they were given, I believe, 90 days to do that report. Mr. Kaywood was given 30 days to do his report. So we've got a little disparity there in the reporting requirements, but that's where we are at this point, that we're on the, the cusp of beginning that process. And I would defer to Mr. Teague if he's got any additional comments or thoughts concerning that and/or the mayor.
Any other comments, questions?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say that again? GMC needs some J, Jackson Thornton data or vice versa? GMC needs some J- Jackson Thornton data or vice versa? 'Cause it would intuitively seem like Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, that Jackson Thornton would need Goodwood Mills and Kaywood data.
They both, they need each other's information that, um, if part of the process from Mr. Kaywood is to say that we need to look at replacing equipment at certain points, then what kind of rate structure do we have to have to make that happen? If there are pipes in the ground that need to be replaced over a ten or fifteen year period of time, what kind of amortization of our rates do we need to have to accomplish that? So the two of them need to be holding hands in this process, and I think they, they are in agreement that they, they will.
Yeah. Well, and the examples you gave, that again, that's GMC stuff needs to inform Jackson Thornton's fee analysis and the whole rest of the financials. I just visualize Jackson Thornton doing more of the financial component of it, and then the infrastructure and capital needs and all that sort of stuff, more of the GMC engineering stuff, but I think I get it, so.
Any other comments, questions? Mayor?
Uh, yes, actually, I have spoken with both GMC and JT today, and, uh, Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, as was previously announced, uh, we will be having lunch out there at the wastewater plant, and I actually had lunch out there the other day, and they, pretty amazing how well of a cook they are out there. But anyway, we do have lunch planned out there for tomorrow. I have talked with, uh, Jackson Thornton, with their, uh, division that, uh, that is handling this. I talked with them to make certain that, um, our support staff, which is HR, IT, um, finance, uh, that, that gives, and also vehicle maintenance, that helps wastewater perform their, their duties, make certain that they are incorporated into this study, because if HR, for example, is providing services, then that should be, if we're gonna be, have, uh, be totally accurate with this system, then we need to know exactly what each department is, is providing to wastewater, so that way we can get a clear, clear-cut, clear-cut process on this, so we're getting the final product that we're really desiring. But I look forward to seeing you out there at lunchtime tomorrow.
I've planned to be there.
Any other questions, comments on this particular subject? Okay. Uh, redistricting, I know that we're not ready with the new maps, but, uh, Mayor, if you and your city planner could give us just an update of where we are and what we can expect in the near future, I would appreciate it.
I'm gonna let Mr. Joel Duke give you all that information.
All righty. Mr. Duke?
Yes, sir. Uh, at this point, the committee, which is, uh, made up of, um, Mr. Argo, Mr. Striplin, and Mr. Wood, have, uh, met several times with us to look at, um, a draft, and we, we have prepared one that, uh, kind of takes the guidelines you adopted earlier, I believe, in June, and tried to come up with something that, uh, meets those guidelines and equalizes the districts. The committee has looked at that. I believe they have asked for a few more tweaks to that map before they're ready to share that with y'all, and, uh, but as, as far as schedule, it, it's, looks like we're still on schedule to have it adopt by October easily.
Okay.
Uh, no, no real issues that we've found at this point, so.
It's good to hear. Any questions of Mr. Duke?
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, I'm gonna refer the next question to Councilman Miller, since he chairs the fire committee, ambulance contract with the county. You call whoever you need for support.
Yeah, and I'll, um, defer to Chief. I know that there's been some stuff in the paper recently and other, um, venues, but Chief Brown?
Yes, sir, and looking in, going through the budget process, a repeal of a budget and everything that we've been working on constantly concerning the operations, I, I came to the mayor concerning the ambulance contract, currently is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, and I'll have Michael up here in a minute. He sets the, uh, bill for the county, keeps up with that to make it flow for you, but it was, I was foreseeing a seventy-four thousand dollar loss in revenue coming from the county. Now, nothing's changed, same services are being provided, my budget's cut, I did not buy an ambulance, revenues are up, providing the same service, yet they're gonna pay seventy-four thousand less. Um, I felt like it needed to be addressed. I spoke with the mayor about it, and, uh, he contacted, uh, the chairman of the fire committee, I believe at the time, Mr. Renninger, over to Mr. Miller. Uh, there's a process, the way it's handling it, and, Mr. President, if you want me to, I'd turn the floor over to my, uh, Commander Whaley, can go through that process if you would like. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I know there was made, there was mention made of the recent article in the paper, and I'm not sure that it gave an accurate depiction of the city's interest in the, uh, city-county ambulance contract. Uh, I did as well as I could to provide information, uh, to the newspaper before writing that article, but, uh, basically to rehash what Chief said is that the, the city-county ambulance agreement is an agreement between the city of Prattville governing body and the Ataga County governing body. Uh, the current agreement that we are under at this time was written in, uh, late two thousand and one and took effect January first, two thousand and two. That actual contract was signed by both parties on the twentieth day of March, two thousand and two. It was an open-ended contract, and so therefore each year, the same contract has been used to figure the bill for providing the ambulance service to the county. Um, there was some property that was acquired in the initial phase of the contract, and there was a clause in there for, uh, for a set amount for four years, a se- a re- set amount of reduction for four years to pay for that, uh, the gurney property that's up on Martin Luther King. After that, that, of course, was paid for by this, by the city's reduction in the, uh, in the contract for those first four years, and then after that, basically, this contract is, uh, is figured upon the total or the, the net operational cost of EMS for the city. And the way we have to figure that is we figure the total operational cost for EMS, and then we would subtract the revenue from the total operational cost, and that gave us the net operational cost. Uh, they, we would then have to figure the call volume in the city and call volume in the county, and we came up with a city-county ratio, and this past year it was thirty percent. Um, and so therefore the county paid the city thirty percent of the net operational cost. Um, the only thing that I like to point out, that I pointed out in the fire committee meeting that we had, was, uh, although we were subtracting the entire one hundred percent of our revenue, uh, thirty percent of the calls were made in the county. Um, so we don't, we, we bill every call that we transport. We put them in the ambulance and we transport the patient, then the call is billed first to insurance, if they have insurance, or Medicare, Medicaid, or private party, however it's billed. Um, the amount we bill is not what we collect. You know, Medicare, Medicaid have set rates that they will pay, and they'll pay no more. Uh, so if you bill everything correctly and provide all the documentation they want, then you get the rate that they will allow. So we collect about sixty percent of what we bill each year, although seventy percent of our calls are in the city. So it never was really fair i- in the contract for the city's portion, uh, that we subtract one hundred percent of the revenues. Uh, we looked at the current contract, and, uh, like Chief mentioned, we put together, or I went ahead and ran some numbers for what the twenty-twelve ambulance contract would be for the county. And, uh, let's see, twenty-eleven, the current contract right now is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-four cent, which is billed to the county quarterly right now at ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-one cent. Excuse me. Uh, maintaining the current contract, the twenty-twelve bill was going to, uh, be three hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and fourteen cent, uh, with a quarterly bill to the county being seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-nine cent. And, uh, those are due to a decrease in our operational budget. Uh, the year before, we purchased, we had a capital purchase, we remounted an ambulance, purchased a new chassis, and all of that is factored into the operational cost, the total operational cost. So with the, with a reduction in our budget this year, and then the, uh, the ordinance that the council passed early last year to increase the ambulance fees, to bring us more along the lines of what private ambulance companies are charging in the city, uh, we saw an increase in revenue and a decrease in our operational cost, and that was the, that was the reason for the decrease in the bill that would be provided, uh, to the county next year. There is a proposed contract that we talked about in the fire committee, and then I did meet with the mayor on, and, uh, made some modifications to the contract that we currently have, cleaned it up a little bit, um, changed some of the language dealing with, um, HIPAA laws and things like that, things that we had to, to bring up to date. And, and basically, the biggest difference in that contract is it ren- it removes the revenue, so that there's not a net operational cost, it's to, they would pay a percentage of the total operational cost. That contract is still in draft form, it's at the city attorney's office right now, uh, and we plan to meet on that to get a, a clarification on a couple more things this coming Thursday. But with, with that draft contract, I went ahead and ran the numbers again on the proposed bill for twenty-twelve, and just taking our revenue out of it, um, the contract fee, uh, two hundred and, uh, two hundred and twenty-one thousand would be the increase. It would be five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, with the quarterly bill being a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight, eighty. But I have all of this information, if you want, if you would like copies of that, I can get it for you. So that's where we stand with that right now. It's, uh, like I said, it's a, it's an agreement between the city government and the county government, so we'll do whatever.
Any questions from the council? Councilman Bowles?
Um, I have the privilege of serving on the fire committee, and I want to say thank you for your hard work on this and catching that. That was a good catch. And I know you've put in tons and tons of time, tons of hours in this thing, and I've seen it, read it, studied it, and, um, it looks really good. I really do appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Miller?
And thirty percent of the calls are in the county?
Yes, sir.
And that ratio is still used, the only thing you've done is you've removed the revenue?
Yes, sir.
So that ratio does not reflect the fact that county calls are much more labor, time, gas, wear and tear intensive, and especially your comment that you don't charge anything if you don't put the patient in the ambulance. So if you make a run and it's false labor, or it's something that can be addressed with first aid or whatever, uh, to the far end of the county, you don't bill or charge, or...
We don't bill the patient anything for those. And, and that's where the, uh, that's where I believe the county-
You don't, you don't bill anyone for those?
No, we don't bill anyone for those.
Okay.
And that, and that's where the county subsidizes for the ambulance contract. That's, I guess the idea behind it is they subsidize to, to make up for, to cover those costs. Um, but it's no secret that a call, uh, you know, at Walmart, would, that we don't transport somebody on doesn't cost as much as a call to Jones that we don't transport somebody on.
Mm-hmm. And I guess my point is, nowhere does, is, is that element of it, that dynamic factored in?
That's true.
So if anything, that is sort of like, um, a subsidy of sorts that Prattville has absorbed if you're looking at just that element alone?
Uh, well, yeah. I mean, without running the, it, it would be labor-intensive for me to break the ca- I have the calls broken down, uh, by type of call, and then I also have the calls broken down for the county by district, so I know which, which volunteer fire district in the county that the calls are made in. Yeah. Um, and you can further break those down into whether we transported the patient or whether we didn't. Right. And then, uh, our billing company is working on an aspect for us in the future to be able to tell, uh, if we build that patient, uh, or, well, not really if we build the, the exact patient, but it would bring it together where if we made, um, like in two thousand and ten, we made one hundred and three calls in the Marbury area, it would tell us the number of calls that we billed, the total amount billed, and the total amount collected for that district, and then you would add those up to, to be able to determine the total amount of money billed and the total amount of money collected in the county outside the city. And you, you would have to have that data to add to what the county subsidizes to be able to determine if we have, uh, you know, covered our expenses as far as those calls.
But again, on this element alone, when you've done a ratio of county calls to total calls, all calls have been treated equal?
Yes, there's no, there's no factor in there to determine city or county.
Okay, thank you. And I, wait, before I say thank you, I, I've, because I've been in the meetings, and I have to second Councilman Bowles' comments, that you, in particular, as the front man, have been just incredible in terms of looking at the data and doing the research and coming prepared and having suggestions and, and, you know, that sort of stuff, and it, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilman Striplin?
Again, thank you for your, your help in this process. Um, could you help me understand, I think I understand where we are now, we're still number-crunching and, and getting it refined. What happens after we do that, as far as relations with the county and communicating with them?
Right. Uh, basically, um, right now, like I said, the, the proposed contract, um, that was viewed and, and okay by the fire committee and also the mayor's office, is the contract that's at the, uh, at the city attorney's office. Once that contract is finalized, I guess that would be a proposal that the city would make to the county for the current year's contract. Now, I, I can't speak for the county, whether they would accept the contract or try to renegotiate, or... So really, i- it's a negotiation process between the city and county government, once we have a, a finalized copy of our proposed contract.
One what-if question. What if they said, "Thank you for your prior service, we're gonna do something else"? Or y'all, would you comment or care to comment on how, what impact that might have, positive or negative?
I, I better let Chief answer that. I could tell you what I, nah, but...
You know, that, as your interim chief right now, that wouldn't be my decision. That would be this council and mayor's decision on what impact takes place on my cuts or pluses or minuses to my department. Uh, the obvious set, say, is thirty percent of the calls, and I'm quite aware of that, Mr. Striplin, and, and I just would have to serve at the leisure of my boss here and the suggestions of what this council wants me to do. If I could say one thing, Mr. President? This, this all started taking place several months ago. I was con- well, Chief Gann was contacted, and I met with Jay Thompson. Jay Thompson and the, the county commission formed a community group to look at the ambulance contract. I don't know all the particulars of that, but I do know they went out and shopped it, and evidently they didn't make a move then because they knew what they were getting. Uh, yes, we do support the best possible means to the county. Uh, private ambulance companies in it to make money. I'm in it to break even as, as soon as I can, because in my mind, I'm to provide, provide public safety, and mainly to the citizens of problem. I'm up to hold the contract as much as I can to the county, and we do that by, we don't prioritize, we go. Uh, the tornadoes that struck during that night, we had five ambulances en route, uh, rescue one en route, two command vehicles treated and transported, uh, the patients. Uh, what I asked the commission to do, because I have a vested interest, is, uh, make sure you do the same thing if you go looking. Well, we met back with them, and they asked us, can we lower the pricing, and we told them, that's not us, that's between the mayor and the council. Uh, the county receives excellent service that we provide at the Prattville Fire Department and City of Problem. They would be hard-pressed to find that somewhere else. Um, but going back to your last comment, that, that, you tell, he tells me what the- last comment, that, that, you tell, he tells me what to do, and I make it happen. So that's where, that's where it is.
Is that a fair enough answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else on this subject?
If I might.
Yes, sir. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I, I would like to commend, uh, Chief Brown and, and also, uh, Commandant, uh, DePat- what's your battalion? Battalion Commander. Thank you. Uh, Whaley. Let's go to... Uh, anyway, both of them, after I first got in as mayor, they came to me and brought up some, some issues, uh, with the ambulance, uh, with our policies, our contract and so forth, and they have really been working really hard on it. And, um, I think this is something that, once we get the final product back from our city attorney, we should be able to move rapidly with this. I've already talked with, uh, commissioners from the county, uh, Steve Golson also, so it, uh, they're, they're aware that, um, that we're ready to bring a finished product to them in the very near future, and, and hopefully at that time, um, some of the council, myself, and, and, uh, our fire department can go to the, to the county and negotiate this contract and just see what's best for the, for the citizens of the whole county. And, and, uh, I know we're willing to, to work with them, just like we are with nine-one-one, and, uh, and move forward for whatever's best for all of us. But, um, that's pretty much all I have to say now.
Okay. Uh, next item is the current financials as they relate to debt. We had a report, a very good report, during our last regularly scheduled council meeting, but there was, uh, some confusion, minor, a confusion about the, um, increased sales tax revenue and as it was paid out as far as debt. Um, our financial guru on the council crunched some numbers, and that, numbers didn't add up, so, uh, we need some clarification on that, Mayor. If you want to call on our finance director, that's fine, but the figure I remember is three hundred thousand dollars paid toward debt service, and the additional one percent as it was collected the month prior came up to, what was it, Councilman Striplin, over four hundred thousand?
Four hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Yes, sir.
Can you clarify that for us, please, sir?
Uh, to the best of my ability, yes, sir. Uh, we had announced that we had paid three hundred thousand, uh, on our, uh, bridge loan at the, at the last council meeting, but we have also since then have paid an additional three hundred and forty-eight thousand, uh, totaling six hundred and forty-eight thousand on that bridge loan, and we have approximately two hundred thousand dollars to put in a special debt account. So that way, it's strictly separated from our other funds. So all the dollars are accounted for.
Okay. Any questions of the mayor or the finance director on that? Councilman Miller?
So those dollars that accrued from that first month's, uh, penny sales tax did not supplant any other dollars in any way to service the debt?
Uh, debt service only on, on the, uh, bridge loan. And we're, we're, uh, we do have an account set up, so that way, when it does come due or when we have the additional funds, then we'll, we'll be paying it down. Uh, hopefully, if, if everything keeps going the direction that, uh, we really hope that it would, we might be able to pay it off early. We'll just have to wait and see.
Okay, but I guess I asked, asked the question a different way. This was additional revenue that we pass the sales tax on in order to service debt. So in my mind, thinking about me as a homeowner, this would be if I got an unexpected source of money and prepaid or paid down my mortgage. I'm trying to draw an analogy here, and is that what we're doing with this money that's accruing from our penny sales tax? It's over and beyond meeting our regular debt service obligation?
Yes, and at this time, we have paid, uh, you know, a prepayment, I guess you could call it, six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. And then we'll do that for the life of the...
Yes, sir. Hopefully, we have it paid off.
Penny sales tax.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The, uh, the additional dollars are being set aside, so that way, when we, we will be paying it down even further as we go and, and hopefully pay it off ahead of schedule on that. And then the other, uh, tax dollars from this one penny sales tax as it comes in, it will go into this account and be set aside for our, uh, other bond payment.
Councilman Striplin?
One question for Mr. Miller to see, to clarify. If, if you would ask the mayor what the original amount of the debt was before we applied, so we'll know where we started, what's been applied and what's left. Does that clarify your question that you...
Would you like, and would you like to have those numbers sent to you in an email, or you'd like for us to gather them tonight?
Yeah, I, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page because we've seen a number of funds that we thought were there, and the two that come to mind are the employee insurance, health insurance fund, and the second one is the, um, gas and oil tax fund.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that were, we thought funded, and those dollars had actually been used to carry the day-to-day expenses of the city outside those designated areas.
Personal costs, yes, sir.
And I just wanna make sure that these dollars, you know, and I, I know, I know that you're as genuine and as honest as I've ever met. I'm, I really do mean that.
Thank you.
You really are. But at the same time, things happen, and I just wanna make sure this money that was passed based on the premise that it was gonna be for debt service is for debt service and doesn't go anywhere else and also does not, um, supplant other dollars that were obligated for debt service.
I have talked, uh, with our finance director, and, uh, we're on the same page as this goal. This is, these one penny sales tax additional dollars are dedicated for debt service, and I can, we can send you a monthly statement on it. Um, the, you tell us what you want, and we'll be glad to provide it to you.
And I guess that, my last comment is, is gonna be that that debt service that is paid out of this one penny proceeds is the same as me making an extra payment on my mortgage, not replacing what my coupon book says I already have to pay every month.
I'm following that. We're, we're, we're moving in the right direction, uh, and I'll be glad to provide you with any documentation that you, that you might desire to make certain. And there again, we need the checks and balances. That's what we're up here for. So I'll, um, I'll get with you at a later date and see exactly how you, what floor match you want that put into and, and, um, send it to you, the whole council, however, whatever, uh, the-
Thank you.
Whatever the council wants.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else on this subject? Councilman Bowles?
I might as well chime in. I'm sitting up here. I think what, if I understand what he's saying right, two, three months ago, before we were collecting the penny, we were putting so much money towards our debt. How much money were we putting towards our debt before that penny tax hit? So it should be, we got four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We should put four hundred and thirty-eight thousand plus what we were putting on the debt the month prior. So it shouldn't be just four hundred and thirty-eight thousand going towards debt services. It should be four hundred and thirty-eight thousand plus the month before money going towards the debt because I want to retire this tax within a year. I want to take it down as fast as possible.
I concur. I do, too.
And that's what I believe Councilman Miller's asking for, and I wouldn't mind seeing that, um, seeing those figures, too. I would like somehow... And so far, the information y'all gave is, is like a breath of fresh air. Thank y'all so much. It makes sense. I understand where you're going with it. I can see where the finances are. But I would like to see what we're paying before we got the debt, before we had the penny, and how much money we are putting up after we got the penny.
Well, the other thing that I might need to bring to, um, bring back up, because when I first got on as, as mayor, and I don't have this figure right here in front of me, but we had, uh, somewhere around two-point-three, two-point-five million dollars in accounts payable on the books. Uh, if memory serves me right now, I think it's somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars. So we have been trying to get current in that area. So it's, uh, and then also, we have been trying to replenish, replenish the healthcare fund. We have also started another account, uh, for the gas and oil tax that you were talking about. And so we have, we definitely have separation of funds here, and, and, uh, we can easily bring you a, a statement on that, that, um, through email version or have it put in your mailbox, just whatever version you want.
Anything else on this subject? Okay. I have the honor of serving on the, uh, executive board for the Alabama League of Municipalities. We had a executive board meeting last week, and in that board meeting, uh, the subject of the RSA retirement as it relates to city employees was broached. Uh, it is the opinion of the, uh, Alabama League of Municipalities that if municipalities can see their wel- their way clear, they should not, I repeat, should not participate. I have a, uh, document that I'll provide copies to you for that justifies why they took that stand. I think you also, uh, received a letter from RSA recently that substantiates that, supports that. Um, but I just wanted to share that with y'all, that that was the stand of the Alabama League of Municipalities, and we do have it, that opinion in writing, and I'll provide copies for you. Any other, any questions on that? We'll get into the details of that a little bit later.
Oh, well, okay.
Yep.
Can I?
Go right ahead.
And this might be for Ms. Thrash, but, you know, city employees have really been hammered. You don't have to get up. City employees have really been hammered with the furloughs and merit raises and that sort of stuff. Could you possibly sort of summarize those? Because, I mean, all of those things that have played out, that have basically affected their bottom line, because I think at a glance, you know, sort of a bullet listing of those would help me and probably others when we entertain these additional things that would have a similar, uh, negative impact. Am I making myself clear what I'm actually looking for?
Excellent. We may need to focus on this, please.
Yeah.
Mary, you're first.
Let me, let me interrupt you just for a moment. We are recording this, so if you would come to the microphone, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily need you to run through them now. I was just thinking if you could make that list up for us. I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cite it now. That's why I told you didn't have to get up at the start. It was gonna be some homework. Thank you.
Anything else on this subject? Okay, this, uh, brings us to other items of interest brought forward by council members and the mayor. Is there any other business that we need to discuss on this work session? Anything at all? Mayor? Yes, sir?
Only thing I would like to say is that, uh, all of the department heads have been working real closely with, uh, Finance Director, uh, for the upcoming budget, and in the very near future, I will be asking the department heads to get with their particular committee, uh, council members, and so that way, they can go ahead and give you a, a preview of what their, uh, needs are for their departments. Um, there have been, uh, some different areas that, uh, departments have come up and showing that they need some, in some areas, some capital projects that we will be reviewing in the very near future. But one of the very interesting things that I have seen so far is that we've, I've actually have also had a couple of departments that have come in under budget. And so I just thought it was some very good news and bring that to you. I think that the, um, economic times and waters that we're in is, is, uh, set in, and everybody knows that, uh, we have to learn to, to work smarter and harder and leaner and, um, and, uh, think outside the box some. So I want to thank all the department heads and the city employees for stepping up to the plate like they have over the last six to nine months or so, because I know it's been very difficult for them with the, uh, the, um, furloughs that we, we, the, the council and I, uh, had to come up with, um, uh, and the other areas that we've had to, to work wi- work around trying to improve our financial health here in the city. And I think that it's finally showing off that we're moving in the right direction. But thank you.
Mayor, can you give us a target date on when you might, uh, have your twenty-twelve budget prepared to present to the, the city council?
I hope it should be for the first meeting in September.
First meeting in September? Okay. Was, did you want to say something, or were you just crossing your fingers? Okay. Anything else in this work session? Okay?